Welcome you to the All Candidates Debate this evening, sponsored by the Greater Armstrong Community Council on Poverty and Homelessness. My name is Joseph Scott and I'm the interim chair of the community council. I'd just like to give you a brief overview of the proceedings for this evening. Due to the number of candidates, tonight's event will be divided into two parts. We'll begin with the mayoral and county councillor candidates, who will each have one minute to introduce themselves and their platform. The candidates will then have one minute to respond to our debate question, which our moderator has in a sealed envelope. And we will close that portion of the evening by have, I'm sorry. Let me touch my ground. The candidates will have one minute to respond to and debate the question in our moderator's sealed envelope. We'll then close this portion of the evening by having the candidates respond to questions that we collected from our online portal, as well as those that you have left at the door when you came in. The second part of our event begins at approximately eight o'clock and follows the same format with the municipal council members who are present this evening. At this point, it is my great pleasure to introduce Amy Shulton as our moderator. Amy is a lawyer and the executive director of the Renford County Legal Clinic, which provides free legal services to low-income residents of Renford County. She's on the board of the Armstrong District Food Bank, and she's been a member of the ad hoc committee on poverty and homelessness since 2018. She's very well qualified to understand the issues of poverty and homelessness at the local, county, and provincial levels of government. And we are especially grateful that she's agreed to moderate this event. Would you please welcome me? Would you please join me in welcoming Amy? Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming this evening. I'm going to stick down there because it keeps getting stuck in my hair or falling off of my suit, so. So I want to thank you all for coming. And in particular, I want to thank our candidates for agreeing to attend today. As you see before you, we have our mayoral candidates. And so what we are going to do next is we're going to just make sure that everybody is going to act respectfully and appropriate and treat each other with respect as we proceed. So in terms of our opening statements, we're going to go ahead and start. And it is first going to be Mike Delfoco, is that how you say your last name? So we'd like to give you one minute. So please provide your opening statement.
Working for the people in need is close to my heart. It is an important place for me to be able to contribute to the impact. In reading the path forward documents and the history of the GACCPH, I would be remiss not to offer personal thank you to David Reed. In 2017, he felt the need to help and he stepped up. Thank you, David, for here. No, please, not here. In 2017, he felt the need to help and he stepped up. I'm a lobbying man. I look forward to writing, to lobbying the county and the higher levels of government to fund our projects. I look forward to four years helping the needy, the homeless, the hospital, and small business. We are in for an economic disaster unimaginable as take the undesigned, unbalanced spiral of control in the world. We must take care of our own power town because no one else will.
Okay, Mr. Delfoco, I want to thank you very much for your opening statements. And we are going to move on now to our next candidate, and that is going to be Lisa McGee. So if you could just one minute, please.
Good evening. My name is Lisa McGee. I am a current councillor on your town council. Throughout this term, and certainly recently, I have heard that you want a town council that is progressive, engaged, approachable, and one that works together, complete together, even in times of disagreement. You want a council that does their homework, takes an evidence-based approach to decisions, and is always mindful of who they are working for, whether it is with communications, respecting the bottom line on taxes, or bringing forward changes to the policies that guide us. We can all agree, this starts with good leadership. Good leaders are open-minded, they build relationships, accept responsibility, and they are the key to the success of the entire team that they lead. You cannot be a leader for all by disregarding family. I have a reputation for being a go-to resource from the community and from my peers, local businesses and residents. I am a transparent and approachable person. I am not a politician. I am a community member with a demonstrated history of delivering on the things that you have said are important to you and being available to people.
Thank you very much. And we're going to proceed. Walter, is that microphone on or do you need to? Oh, I thought it was too close. Is that right?
Is it on now?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. I want to first of all want to thank all the candidates for putting their names forward for the commitment to Armstrong. My commitment to this community is as strong as ever. We're fortunate with our parks are downtown and the managed growth providing the tax base to sustain and enhance our services. As a mayor, I feel my responsibilities are to make decisions that are good for the community as a whole. Housing is a major concern, and there are solutions, but they will involve the upper governments with funding opportunities that can be assessed to initiate municipal and private sector partnerships. I've proven this with the results of the Central and West Station laws providing some 40 very affordable apartments for seniors. I've worked hard on their behalf, and the results prove our progress. Council is not alone in making the decisions and defining the direction of our town. The provincial government is a major partner, and the process of using the provincial process is something I'm very familiar with. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rob Dennis. I've worked in the housing industry for 35 years. Through my extensive work travels through North America, I've seen more than one city or town turned on its head from homelessness and poverty. Affordable and suitable housing is critical to the economic and emotional health of a community. My main goal for the next four years is to round out Armstrong's market-based housing growth with an integrated approach to housing for the less financially able of all ages. This is a tough barrier-ridden goal. That being said, there is progress to be made through the county council taking on the role of liaison between all government and nonprofit agencies that contribute to solutions for townsfolk in need of housing assistance. There is a possibility here. Many well-intended bodies were diligently to find solutions, but often miss opportunities due to a lack of coordination. My goal, which I feel is achievable, would be to work both on a broad overview basis as well as push the support where necessary to get shovels in the ground.
Statement?
Go ahead.
One minute. My name is Dan Lynch. I'm seeking a second term as your Armstrong County councillor. My wife, Monica, and I have lived in Armstrong for the past 30, 40 years. I'm a veteran of the Canadian forces. I recently retired from as your airport manager after 22 years. I'm currently a volunteer for Armstrong's McDonald's at home. I'm running for county council because I want to make a difference for the town of Armstrong and the county of Renford. My priorities as your Armstrong County councillor are retain staff. We have the best in the valley. This past term, through applications and grants, the town has received $10 million. Keep our taxes, both county and town, low, supporting group and bringing more business to the town. Loaning evidence for affordable housing, continue with infrastructure for replacing old roads, and complete the managed master water pump plant. I'm asking for your report for my performance as a county councillor for the past four years and the town councillor for the past 12. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now at the portion of our debate where we look at the big question that is being presented to you today. So everybody will have one minute to respond to the big questions. So the question is, in 2019, the cost of a 100 apartment in Armstrong averaged $786 per month plus utilities. As of 2022, apartment listings in Armstrong now range from $1,250 to $2,500 per month plus utilities. What would you do to increase housing options in the town of Armstrong that are safe, affordable, and accessible for local residents? We're going to begin our question, our answer to this question with Mike Delfoco. We don't want it.
Thank you. That tells me that we're very short on housing. So I guess the lobbying to the government is the answer there. To me, those lobbying units over on William Street seem to be, look like a really nice project. And I'm not sure if they, if they serve the purpose. But if they did, I would continue on those lines. I was reading the, in the report for the, the report. And they talked about small houses or something like that. Well, the small house program doesn't seem to work. And I wouldn't, I just continue my lobbying for those, more money for the government for the, for the same long ideas. Because we have lots of room on that down there. So I would continue in that direction.
First of all, I think it's important to recognize that the town is not solely responsible for providing affordable housing out of the tax base that we have. There's a limitation to what we can do with your taxes. That doesn't mean that we don't need to be at the table and developing relationships, moving things forward, and working with partners that we can engage, the products, the feds where needed, and private partners in some cases, to find a win-win in any situation in order to bring it forward. We're here tonight at the GACCPH, and they have some key recommendations that they have brought forward recently to our council. Among those is to have a housing needs assessment. And I have read that through. It's provided by the UDC. It's a framework that they have, Housing Assessment Resource Tool, HART. An amazing model that will help support, bring some money from local partners.
Okay, certainly the residential, local residential tax-based tent, finance the housing need in Armstrong. And I think there's a couple of things we need to do. We need to, first, there's been a lot of good work on trying to identify solutions. We need to come to the point of what that path is going to be, what we're looking for to build or do. The second thing is, I propose that if I'm elected, I'm going to set up a task force of all the county mayors on this issue. Because we, my time at county council at 12 years, we've had those special task forces for Highway 7 to 417. We've had it for housing projects before, and they work. We can get to the ministers that way. I've been in front of the table with the ministers. And those projects work, but there's one formula, and it was proven with the West and Central Station laws. The government needs to come forward with capital investment, and we can do municipal and private partnerships, and that's the solution for it.
I would be approaching this on two levels. One is on a personal level, where with the support of that from the town, and specifically with Walter Stack, we have been able to sever our property in the downtown area and are able to build a retirement cottage next door on a separate lot. And that's going to be helped from the town. And we're also in the process of designing an additional dwelling unit, which is already allowed under the my laws to build behind our existing house, which we hope to rent out to hostile employees or people that are working at the girl. So that on a personal level is approached. And of course, on a county councillor level, as I mentioned in my opening statements, I'd be very happy and motivated to stay engaged in keeping the focus on affordable housing for people of all ages. Thank you.
I think we need to bear in mind news. With no money, you're not going to get your affordable housing. If we don't have our developers on site to have the land available, to have shovel ready, building, apartments, whatever you want for the housing, it's not going to happen. Perfect example, Pembroke is ready. They've got the design, and they're going to get money for it. We need to do the same thing. We have to get the developers on site to afford these houses. Thank you.
Okay, the next. I see that your hand's up. The next part of the discussion is to open it up for a larger debate. So for five minutes. So Walter, you want to go ahead and start speaking? And then I will, I'll pass down the mic. So the five minutes will start when the first person starts to answer questions in the larger debate.
Okay, the slightly different position in terms of the shovel ready. Those two apartment buildings, Central Station laws and West Station laws, were not shovel-ready. The provincial government, through some federal funding and some real hard work from the county, and they got to complement the county staff on it, took an idea that was, came from a discussion around the county council table. We debated and pressured the profits, and finally, they gave us money. The first time, it was an experimental sort of process. And then the money came the second time. But there was no shovel-ready program there. It was an idea that we were able to do it. And that's where I think this task force will come in, is we can build on that idea. I've listened to a federal government's been elected three times. It's going to do a $10 million national housing program. Haven't seen much of that money yet, you know? So I think we're going to have to go banging on the door. Developers, I recruited developers for those projects. They're happy, they're on site. It took some convincing, but they're only going to do it for profit. So let's not kid ourselves about anything else. So there has to be an enticement for them. And they need to have some, they will have control over the housing at that point. And then the other thing is, you know, mortgage rates today, so we want to build something to rent to people or build something to sell. Selling may be more of a difficult path today.
Is there anybody else that would like to add any other feedback or comments to their opening statements regarding this question? Do you want to add anything?
Sure. Sure. I'm wondering why the current council turned down three affordable apartment buildings that were applied to be built at AB and Thomas Streets on Way 9. There was three apartment buildings. There was an application. A builder wanted to put in three apartment buildings, affordable apartment buildings, and they were turned down.
Actually, this is about book. So I think you have to start with the definition of affordable. And I mean, it's different things to different people. One thing that seems to be consistent is that CMHC defines affordable housing as housing that is 30% of your income. So if you're making $200,000 a year, $60,000 a year or $12,000 a month would be affordable. When we take a look at the average income, recent census for Armstrong residents, we're coming in at under $50,000 a year. When you apply that 30% analogy to those incomes, you're talking about an apartment at $1,375 a month. Now, the apartments that you're speaking of, the developer identified those as being for incomes of $60,000 to $80,000 a year. When you apply that same 30%, then you are looking at monthly rents of $1,666 to $2,222, which is a far cry from where we are with our average income of $1,375.
You don't turn them down. You don't just turn them down. He wants to build three affordable apartments, and you say, well, that's too much to rent.
Well, we can't call them affordable if they're not affordable.
They're not affordable.
What's your definition of affordable, sir?
There is no definition of affordable. Affordable depends where you live.
You know, it's, I think actually today, the provincial government uses the term attainable housing. And attainable housing or affordable housing, whatever you want to call it, ranges for everybody. I've had people say to me about the apartments being built along with the land loss, that that's way out of reach. Nobody in Armstrong can afford them or needs them. Well, you know what? There is. And there are seniors that have health issues, that are selling their homes and happy to move into that sort of big, work-dollar life, that built an income and an estate and have the right to spend it. They should have the right to have that level of apartment available to them. I had numerous conversations with the developer of the Thomas Streets, William Street development, and the initial conversations. And they were just conversations in the beginning of it. He was looking at $1,200 to $1,400 a month, depending on some of the apartments. And, you know, the central version of housing does define it, as Lisa said, in terms of the income levels of that. But I'm going to tell you, delaying them only increases the cost, which only increases the rent.
I have a red card already. With the three apartments being built, it adds inventory to the town. And when people have a choice of where they can rent, if that adds 100 units, that adds pressure on landlords to reduce rents because all of a sudden, they're competing with 100 brand-new apartments. So I think putting it in terms that only fit into a certain definition really reduced our ability to put more people in housing under $2,000. And that was not a good thing to do.
Okay, I think that concludes the debate portion of the evening. So we are now going to move on to some of the questions that we have received and that have been compiled by the Greater Armstrong Community Council on poverty and homelessness. So the first person that's going to be answering this question is going to be Lisa McGee. And then we'll work our way down from there, okay? So question number one, property taxes. How will you work to balance competing priorities in the annual budget, specifically with respect to our taxes?
I just had to get it in here.
Sure. So the question's about property taxes. How will you work to balance competing priorities in the annual budget, specifically regarding taxes? And Lisa, if you can start with the question. You have one minute to answer the question.
Certainly, this is core of what we do, right? Making responsible choices with your tax dollars. Everyone at the table here are also taxpayers, so that's key. It starts with core services. You know, if our roads are not being done, if our library is not being taken care of, then nothing else is going to happen. So at least maintaining the levels of core service that we need in town. And then enhancing, you know, accounting for our growth through our creation plan. It's not a decision any one person makes. There's a group of seven of us, and seven people should be at the table making those contributions to how we do so. We are fortunate to have a treasurer who leads us through the process as well, as staff starts the process in June, July. And by the time the budget comes forward to us, it's laid out and it's quite prepared. Have you ever watched? There's not a whole lot of, that they've done.
Okay, over the last five years, your property tax rates in Armstrong averaged 1.4% with 2022 being zero. You know, there's a 20-year broken-down from 2010 and five-year plan for our infrastructural needs and capital needs that the staff do a good job on. But we've grown a lot. There's huge tax revenue increases coming in here right now, and higher than there's ever been. So I think we need to pull together next year, next term, and I committed as a mayor, we're going to do a total financial review and an organizational review to look at what the services are today and what's needed in the future with our changing community, and how we're going to manage this, what is sort of a cash cow right now, but 10, 15, 20 years from now, when that infrastructure wears, it won't be.
I think the next two or three years might prove to be very challenging with inflation the way it is. Building, infrastructure, labor, everything's gone up very substantially in the last year and a half, two years. So I think fiscal responsibility amongst people that are taking care of spending the money, paying attention to detail, is within our control. What input costs are not as much, are in our control. And I think it's really important that there's leaning towards conservation when we're dealing with tax dollars. Thanks.
Your new impact assessment will be coming out shortly. You'll see about a 15% increase. That's associated with your bill rate, which equals your taxes. The taxes are then borne by the town council. And from there, our treasurer, as we previously mentioned, tells us how much we can spend, how much we should save. And being frugal, the way Armstrong has been for the past four, 12 years, we've done a good job. I look forward to doing the same thing the next time around. Thank you.
I'm not sure that the overbuilding and the building to come that's been approved by council, current council is going to cost everybody a lot of money because the water filtration, sewage, and everything that goes with that infrastructure is going to, if we continue to grow at the rate we're growing, we're going to be paying a lot of extra taxes to repair those. The tax rate's going to go up, trust me, in the next few years. Retaining it's not, is not going to work. Our taxes are going to go up if there's no controls put in place by the next council.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to the second question. We're going to start with Walter Stack. And the question is, if you need to repeat it after I say it the first time, they let me know. What should the town of Armstrong do to further promote the age-friendly community initiative? So I'll repeat it just so it's clear. What should the town of Armstrong do to further promote the age-friendly community initiative? And Walter, if you can start it, please.
Thank you. We've been fortunate with the group, the committee that's taken this responsibility over the last few years. And they've made some great progress with the Manship and the Agribusiness Learning Center. I think now it's time, and I've had discussions with some of them, the locations and the size of those locations are really becoming a problem. So there needs to be a real significant move in terms of trying to find better housing for the programs so that they can expand. And it'll take some financing, I think, beyond just sort of Armstrong to do that. But there is one project that's being looked at right now. And I'm glad to say that the council, Armstrong, stepped up and became a partner in that event to look at one location and try and get it developed into expanding these programs.
Yeah, I believe that supporting the programs that are already in place through the Manship is the best way to move forward, to work with people that are already engaged with us. I look forward to being a participant and helping in that way.
Yes to Salk and yes to the Manship. And let's not forget, Armstrong recently picked up students at home program with their age-friendly, all for seniors. With those three programs, the town of Armstrong is doing quite well. I think if we're looking after seniors, and if there's any other thing that the town council can make financially possible, I would certainly support. Thank you.
We have to say, I think we're doing a nice job with the seniors. With the seniors who have all the support, so they armstrong in that race. Seniors at home. And I think, I think everything looks pretty good in that department, actually.
The Age Friendly Community Plan is certainly one that we should be incredibly proud of for the gains that we've already made. And of course, there's always opportunities. So to the question of how can we promote the Age Friendly Community Plan going forward, as everybody else has said, we have, we have some great groups. We've got the seniors at the Living Center, we've got the Men's Shed, we've got all of our partnerships in that regard, and continues to be the seniors at home. So continuing to support those, looking for new partnerships, you know, marriages between, between recreation and these, between our library and these partners, you know, with the growth expansion, how can they all work in synergy and cooperatively together and find the opportunities there for expanded programs when there are limited inefficiencies of others where that would be a benefit?
Okay, so the microphone will be passed down to Ron, there, please. Thank you. You'll be answering the next question first. So one topic that's come into our community news is the proposed Rogers Communication Tower. What is your position on the proposed Rogers Communication Tower?
The communication tower that was outside the Crown Automotive is, my understanding is that that has not been, that's not been approved, that's not going forward.
So the question is, what is your position on the proposed communication tower, the rock, on the proposal?
Any communication tower, that location shouldn't be in the middle of town. My understanding is a communication tower that was, that many people were against in downtown is not going forward. So I'm not familiar with another communication tower that is going on.
Okay, next.
I'm in favor of communications. Don't think of just Empire, think of the county. There's that many farms, all of these other people down the line that don't have communications in the way of VTAC, how to get to an Empire hospital, how to call 911, they have to use their dial-up phone with internet. Small business is the way to go, and this is simply one leg to get down the line. I agree it's not where it's supposed to be, but we do have a tower already in place owned by the county on the county trail that could be used. Thank you.
But I think the tower, it's all about safety to me. If it's, if it's community someone, the tower builders, if the tower builders can prove to us that it's safe, then we have to look at it. If it's not, safety is number one. It's all about this people. If it's unsafe at all, forget it. That's my, that's my thought on it. Right after looking, then we have to look at what it's about, if you just don't like any vision of that, I'm going to look at it.
So in terms of the proposed tower, my position from the beginning, wrong location without any question whatsoever, no doubt, wrong location. And in terms of that's likely not something we even need to concern ourselves with because Crins, who is the blocking that was tasked with making the recommendations, have said that that's in fact the case, or there's support or requests not to have that location. I remain open-minded in terms of alternatives, but again, considering the safety, considering location, considering everything else. It's, you know, technology happens, we do have to move forward. The reason that we have interest in communications now is because of events. So we have to remain open-minded but clever at the same time.
And you go on.
Okay, I've done a lot of work on this issue, and the representative from Crins has committed to me and the local group as well as our CEO that the initial location will not be recommended to the federal government. The tower that the county owns just outside of the fire hall is a possibility, but it will require significant infrastructure improvements to do that. Either one of those locations is equally bad in my mind. Now, I've also proposed and talked to three different people, property owners in town that are willing to host the tower. And I know that from the Rogers consultant I spoke with, that he's already reached out to one of those people to host the tower. Downtown, in the middle of our town is a wrong location, but you know, that communication is going to come forward, it's going across the world, it's going to be here, and the Via Tower needs to be in the right spot. But I don't think it's the town of Empire's responsibility to provide a level playing field between Rogers and Bell or anybody else. That's just not ours.
We are now arrived at our final question for everyone, so if you can pass the mic down to Dan, please. So I'll read the question once and repeat it just to make sure you can hear me, okay? This is regarding the waterfront project. What is your vision for a new waterfront?
Well, it's a pretty easy answer. We have a waterfront study plan, just to read it. Second part is we had the council meeting last Monday, it was brought forward, we're not going to have shovels in the ground for at least two years. We can get the lighting, we can get the sidewalks in, but it takes at least two years to get all the permits to change the last keeping of where the weir is. I'm hoping within two years, we're going to have the walkway for the seniors to get down to the water, to the beach area. The marine awareness will be way down the road. We were asking if we could do the financing for that earlier, and the answer was we can, we can afford it on our own at budget time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mike, if you want to answer the question.
The waterfront, the waterfront. I would put waterfront on the back burner. We talk about, you talk about affordable housing, and we talk about people not having any money, we talk about the economy of state, and we talk about fighting COVID, and we talk about our hospitals being poorly run. Waterfront development, I've been here for 37 years and the beach hasn't gone anywhere. So I don't know who's talking about wharves and money spent down there in restaurants down on the waterfront. I think, I think people have to look at what is in front of us, and we deal with what we need to deal with. There's people hurting, people are hurting so badly.
So in regards to Robert Simpson Park, last election, my position was this is already, already our crown jewel here in town, and it does not need millions upon millions of dollars, taxpayer money in order to, you know, enhance it. I've since come to determine some walkable pathways, making it accessible for everybody. We have some parking issues down there, and enhancing the weir, that does need to be done and should be done soon. I'm not thinking that we need to, you know, we're back to the taxes question that we had earlier on, I'd have a very difficult time putting it onto the tax base for marine enhancements unless we could see that there was a firm economic benefit to it. If you talk to our downtown business owners, they will tell you that they are not benefiting significantly from the daytrippers at Ralver Simpson Park. That doesn't mean that it doesn't need enhancements, but we've got to be slow, steady, and responsible in doing so.
As Dan said, the waterfront plan was presented to council again last Monday night. And my position is we've been through all the consultants, we've had some great input from the community. A 10-year plan is much more realistic than a 20, but I think it needs to focus on Robert Simpson Park first, and you know, and then Bell Park and McLean Avenue Park, things for people who don't have cottages, boats and stuff like that, need to have an improved park area and easy access to the water. We have a serious safety issue with where our beach is now, so we need that breakwater done immediately so we can move the beach back to where it was years ago and stop that issue. In terms of the marina and that redevelopment, I still believe there's a realistic opportunity to bring private funding into that scenario, and I think we should do it. And we don't want to forget that we did a great thing for Empire with the downtown revitalization, turning it into a destination community, and the revised waterfront will add to that.
With the waterfront, I'd like to see the wharf built out so we can stop the sand from washing away upstream at Robert Simpson Beach and the parking enhanced there. And I'd also like to see getting bids next year for the pathway that goes from Robert Simpson all the way to downtown. And I think that we dealt the downtown urgent since there was a very walkable path, and especially a walkable path that was lit at night. So those are aspects of the waterfront plan that I think are non-controversial for most folks. And, but also at one point, I'd love to see us explore private partnership development on the waterfront for the marina area with restaurants and access for people to enjoy their time by the river.
Okay, I'm actually just going to ask you to pass the mic down. We are now at the point where you have your one-minute closing statement, so if you could, please pass the microphone down and if you could go start us off then.
Thank you, just one comment. For the last four years, we've had the county council representing the town of Empire, our board was Debbie Robinson, and to quote her, Dan is an envy, respect, and admiration of county colleagues, and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to work with him for the past four years. I have no hesitation in saying that Dan has and continues to be extremely effective county councillor for the town of Empire. Thank you. I was born and raised in Manetteck and very familiar with the Ottawa Valley before I left in my late teens to work in other parts of Canada and the US. In coming close to semi-retirement, which would turn into not semi-retirement if I get elected, I will, we're very happy my wife and I to be back in the Ottawa Valley. We have a lot of family here, and Empire is such a beautiful place, and I know it has its challenges, but I feel very positive about what can happen here in the next four to eight years. Thank you.
Okay, I'm very pleased to have the chance to be here tonight after missing the last debate due to COVID. But thank you to the council for organizing this event and to the candidates for participating. Thank you for coming out tonight and asking questions and listening. This is our community and we can move it forward together. With this board, my wife Barbara and my family have worked hard for all of the residents and will continue to do so. I'm proud to say that in years on council, I've never not returned a call, a text, an email, or not met with anyone who has asked for my time. So please do not hesitate to contact me if you wish to discuss something further. I respectfully ask for your support to continue the process by securing your vote to become your mayor for one more term. Goodnight, thank you.
It's not our history or how long we've lived in town that will move us forward, it's having an open-minded, collaborative, progressive approach to tackling the road ahead of us. It's leading by example and working respectfully with others in order to get things done. As you've seen tonight and the other night, the answers and solutions, they're not always clear, and there's many options on how to find the best solutions. We candidly, solutions are easier to execute when there is effective engagement and strong leadership. Leaders need to be able to take egos out of discussion for the greater good. Four years ago, you put your faith in me to sit as your councillor representative, and I have not let you down. Remember, the mayor is the CEO of the town, but they are just one of seven votes at the table. The CEO means nothing if you can't build collaboration and respect from your community. You said you want strong and effective council for the 2022 to 26 term, and I respectfully ask for your vote in October so that I can help make that happen.
I'm worried about overdevelopment. I read this in the newspaper last week. The writer said, "I have not had a family doctor since 2018, when she closed her practice. The ER is now my family doctor, my endgame resolution. The ER is now my family doctor." This reinforces my question of future plans for our town as the current direction seems to be focused on making it no more than a bedroom community for the working and spending their money for the people that work and spend their money in Ottawa. Finally, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you to the other candidates for caring enough to come, for caring enough about our town to be here tonight.
And that concludes the discussion tonight with our potential mayor candidates. I want to thank you very much. I thought that this was very well discussed and worked very well cooperatively, and so I appreciate all of your time and your well-thought-out answers and your commitment to the town of Empire. So thank you.